I'd like to call meeting number forty-two. At the moment, not official order, but everyone please stand for their pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone please remain standing. I'd like to have everyone offer a moment of silence for Battalion Chief Ronald Russo, the Youngstown Fire Department, and his family.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Is that a shaddish face or something?
You know, I want you all to know that today is the twenty-sixth, so this little event that I put our two commissioners and some of our other electeds in for the pink ribbon is going to be over shortly, so if anybody would like to give a last-minute donation, you're welcome to do that, and then we'll let you know what group won next week.
Hey, hey, hey.
And I'm sure it'll be us.
Well, you know, I think that our colleagues in the county aren't giving their money to Austin Town.
Oh.
So, you know, I talked to Genetti and all them guys, and they said, yeah, we gave and they sent it to the trustees in Austin Town because they want to see Anthony in the tinsel.
Hey, you may be surprised. I may wear that thing good.
Well, I'm not going to touch that.
That's what you want, that's what you'll get.
On top of his clothing.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, that leotard.
So, never.
Hey, how about what, I mean, some of us are too young to know, but how about, you know, everybody was shocked when Joe Namath was in pantyhose, right? It was back in the seventies, early seventies. He did a commercial for somebody's pantyhose. That was pretty, that was pretty hot. Back then, that was a pretty risky game. Today, nothing. Oh, yeah, yeah. What were those, all you ladies that were born in the seventies, who were that they used to sell in that little egg shop?
Late.
Yeah, some of us that were born before that know that, too.
I know. Just check. I was just giving everyone the benefit of the doubt that they were born in the seventies. Okay, we'll start off the meeting with public comments. If anyone has anything to say, ask you to come up to the microphone and... Look at that. Right on time, Bob. Welcome, Bob.
Glad to be here. How's everybody?
I love that hat. When I was growing up, we used to call those hobo hats.
Pretty much the same.
I like that. The balder I get though, the more I want one, because now I can realize that my head gets sunburned and my head gets cold, so...
Mine get cold.
Nice of you to join us, Bob. Thank you. Public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-one, Thursday, October nineteen, two thousand seventeen, approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Go call.
Commissioner Nadyo Gedi? Yes. Commissioner Chappacanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. All right, agreements, data. All right, seeing none. Agreement with Service Pro for software licenseings for document management, the amount of forty-four thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty cents, general fund, four dollars. That's proprietary. It's a proprietary agreement. Mine says four. Oh, sorry. We're going to do a long one.
I was going to say, I'm even against that.
Man, oh man, I was looking at that. I drafted, Jen, that's the... Sorry, Nancy. Wow.
Wow.
Going to say, that is out here, they're spending forty grand. All right. All right, thank you. Appreciate you steering me straight. P, Dog Ward.
Good morning, everybody. This is with multiple options, this agreement, and this is for the customization and the sort of phase two of our software program for, that operates the shelter, dispatches for us, operates the shelter, runs everything and does licensing. This is non-general.
Engineers.
Commissioners, letter C is an agreement with RMS Company to do some bridge repairs on Pleasant Valley Drive Bridge. Letter D is an agreement with Commercial Truck and Trailer to do repairs to one of our trucks. Letter E is an agreement with Fortnec Tractor to do repairs on one of our tractors. And those three are all non-general funds. Letter F is a memorandum of understanding with the City of Youngstown, the joint purchase of sodium chloride for the upcoming year.
I thought you said we weren't going to need anything for the roads this year. It's going to be...
We're not. We're just doing it as a CYA.
It's not like you said that. I know it's not like you said that.
I'm not going to tell you what the weather said. It might come Monday.
I thought November, they were talking, it's going to be real nice. I guess it'll hit us in October, then it'd be nice.
Even if we get some, it's just going to be scattered.
All right. J, J.J.C.
Good morning, commissioners. Nancy. This is an agreement with County Board of Education to create an early warning system in the amount of three thousand dollars, non-general, and H is an agreement with the Village Network to provide counseling services in the detention center, in the detention center, estimated amount of ten thousand nine hundred dollars, condo.
Sanitary.
Hi, yes, good morning, commissioners. I am in agreement with Allmax. They're to provide the software, the updates and upgrades to our Operator Ten program. The Operator Ten program is used to perform the NPDES permit information that we submit on a monthly basis. J is in agreement with CP Consultants to provide engineering services. The department has determined that a sanitary sewer located on Ruby Court needs to be relocated and reinforced and portions replaced, so they will provide us the means that we need to go about to do this improvement. And K is in agreement with Prime Group. This is to provide engineering services related to the replacement and installation of new pumps at the community center plant.
Thanks. Motion for agreements.
Motion approved agreements, letters A through K.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Nadyo Gedi? Yes. Commissioner Chappacanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders, purchasing.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jim.
This is the final change order for Dog Shelter. What this does is clarify and resolve issues we have with the architect, the general contractor, and us as the owner. We're banning going for mediation, and by moving forward with this, we've saved a lot of time and money.
Excellent. And that's quote A and B.
Quote A. For number B, the front steps are sinking and separating from the front of the courthouse. While we have the trades working here, instead of evolving into a public safety and welfare issue, we felt that we had expedited and use who's here working and saving in time. Those steps, believe it or not, we had to remove one to see what was going on. There's brick walls holding up the top of the steps. We thought it would be something solid, but it's all hollow, and through the years, the rain has deteriorated the brick walls. So, we're on top of that. That will be done by the end of November.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Sure.
Sanitary.
Hi, yes, Commissioner. C is a request for approval by the Board of Extra Work Order Number One, and this is with Otis Elevator. During the construction, installation of the new elevator at the Campbell Wastewater Treatment Plant, the intent under the original plan was to use the existing shaft for the installation of the hydraulic post that goes into the ground. Well, this one here needs to be much deeper wired, so we had to use an extra work order to complete work necessary for the installation of the new elevator.
Thanks, Bill. Change orders.
Motion approved, change orders A through C.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Nadyo Gedi? Yes. Commissioner Chappacanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one. Adictions?
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Nadyo Gedi? Yes. Commissioner Chappacanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, resolutions, commissioners. Resolution to extend the time of the annexation petition, request of eighteen point eight three acres of Campville Township for thirty days. I see Mr. Medias here. Does he like to say anything about that? If you'd allow him to.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to commend the wisdom and the leadership of the commissioners and your attorney. From my estimate, having been interjected into this since last year, because of your perseverance and your wisdom, an issue that was hanging out since two thousand and four that we have no interest in, we're not a party in, other than the community, was combined in a global solution that I think is, well, not that I think, but that both the city council and Campville voted unanimously for, the trustees voted unanimously for, we're endorsing, the other parties are endorsing, and it's that proverbial win-win-win. So, I really want to thank you. We have to get it across the finish line, November twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, with the final agreement, but for seeing that coming, it's greater tax base for the county, for the trustees, for the city, for the schools, for the fire, and again, I want to thank you because really, it was your perseverance and steadfastness and interjected your attorney into it in the discussions, it really helped us, so thank you. We appreciate that.
Thanks, man. Appreciate your kind words, but yourself, and like you mentioned, a lot of people involved that, you know, when, I don't know who was the author of this saying that nobody cares who gets credit for what happens, a lot of good things can get done, so... And I think that, you know, a lot of people involved have worked very hard, and, you know, you're right, hopefully it gets pushed across the finish line very quickly, and you can move forward, and so can the communities.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, purchasing.
This was a date issue, and I am with shift that should have been prosecutor's office. This is just catching up as far as making a full expenditure.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners, on B.
Commissioner, this is a resolution for Sheriff's Office authorizing the establishment of the Law Enforcement Division grant line.
County Court, District Court.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. Good. This is a request for moral obligation payment to NBD International, and it was for services performed in Court Number Four in Austin Town. Back in July, there was a major sewer backup that basically made the court unsuitable for tenancy, so after all the work was done, they had removed four boxes of case files that they had restored, and also, they did a final cleaning and sanitizing of the building before we moved back in. The four thousand eight sixty-eight eighty-two, the judges are covering with their special project funds, and the two thousand six oh one sixty-nine, clerical courts is going to cover that.
All right, good. Thanks. Joseph, family.
Good morning, commissioners. E is our memorandum of understanding with workforce and government board, which is part of the MCTA and Ohio Union's job, and that's where mandated partner, so that's what that one is. F is a resolution approving the appointment of one hiring and a clerk, a clerical specialist in Chow's Court. We had a employee retired, this is a replacement.
Thanks, sir. Bird, anything that you need to add to that?
No, actually, I came over, suddenly, and Jen, I came over for moral support for Bob.
You did? I thought maybe you came over to make sure that, you know, that he didn't need help.
This is a two-year MOU, as Bob mentioned. My only kind of job in family service is a partner, mandated partner in federal legislation, and obviously, it helps fund our one-stop system in our board and office, so...
Excellent. Thanks, Bird. I like to give Bob a hard time, with Bob and you working together, all good things happen, because you guys do a nice job.
Thank you. Good work.
On B, grants, prosecutors.
Good morning, commissioners. This grant is a continuation grant. It's from the Violence Against Women's Act, and it partially funds prosecutor for services.
Thank you. Grant. Keep Carol in touch. Sanitary.
Hi, yes, commissioners. This is a request from the department in cooperation with the prosecutor's office to appoint Frost, Brown, Todd, a special counsel to the department in a matter regarding the Ohio EPA certification of licenses for department personnel.
Sheriff's.
I could adjust that. This is a demand the sheriff needed for a new program he's implementing, is through cooperative purchasing.
Thanks, sir. Veteran's Services.
I could do veterans as well. This is a bus they need. They're acquiring it through the Department of Transportation, the Transport Department staff report.
Excellent. Thank you, commissioners. And then we have K as an add-on for resolution for sanitary.
Hi, yes, Commissioner Dennis, a request by the department to designate Pat Genetti, sanitary engineer, as the board's designate for the signing of documents necessary to initiate the board and treatment plant project, while funded through USDA. The pre-construction meeting is tomorrow at ten o'clock. There are certain documents that will be executed on behalf of the board through Pat, so this is a resolution that gives him that ability to do stuff.
You okay with that, Bill? Put Pat in charge of that?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
All right, motions approved resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, A through K, K being an add-on.
Second. Go call.
Commissioner Nadyo Gedi? Yes. Commissioner Chappacanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Call for the good of the order. God, any good to talk to Bob?
Does that mean I could sign blank checks, huh?
All right, as long as Meacham gives them to you.
Again, construction's still ongoing, you know, we're trying to wrap up the two Merdy Road projects. Those are both still under construction. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. Again, I continue to emphasize the importance of paying attention. You know, it was on the news, I believe, yesterday about Battalion Chief Russo, that potential that the driver may have been distracted. There's a lot of people on the roads out here, and, you know, these people want to go home each night to their family. It's unfortunate that terrible things like that happen, but, you know, we have active construction zones. There's a lot of cones, a lot of, a lot of people out there, and I noticed this morning, people driving on the wrong side of the barrels. People need to pay attention and be alert when they're driving through these zones. It is a temporary inconvenience, but the projects are wrapping up. Everybody's working hard to get them done before the weather hits. I just caution everybody to take their time, put your phone down while you're driving, and there's a lot of people out on these roads right now, and, you know, the weather's starting to turn, too, so, you know, be cautious and cognizant of your surroundings.
I was absolutely ready about the telephone. We need to put these in our pockets, turn them off as soon as you get in the car, because that's, that was one of, that was a distraction in that case.
You know, and...
That's crazy, Nick.
I attended the calling hours last night for Chief Russo, and, you know, what a tribute, what a great man, what a great family, and, you know, I stood in line for almost two and a half hours just to get through, and it speaks volumes of the impact that he made, not only to the fire department, the police department, the sheriff's office, but the public. Very well-respected, what a close family, too. Those brothers were so tight, and, you know, it was something, something to see.
Thirty-five hundred people, it says, largest ever in, you know, it's just amazing.
We were there this morning, and it was starting to fill up when we left, and I was there like eight fifteen. I got out of the car at eight-thirty and waited in line so that we could get in, but it's a sad day when a guy that young, so, so well-respected in the Youngstown Fire Department, and I happened to work with him for years because I was in the city first, and never a me or out of their mouth, he or his twin, Rich, when he was on.
And Bobby was the sheriff's...
Yeah, sheriff's department, so we definitely, this is a killer, and I hate to say it, this is worse than a gun, this phone, this taxi crier is worse than a gun. And if we can't wait twenty minutes between the time we leave where we're at to go home and not even get a call, something's wrong. If we can't wait that long to get off these damn things, this was, technology is something that we all want, and we're seeing a lot of it, thank God for it, but there's a time and a place that we need to use these things. And it isn't in a car while you're driving in a busy section, intersection, where you have people working, trucks, engineering people on the road, our engineers department, whether it's sanitary in, with one of those basins that you have to clean up. I mean, we need to start watching what we do, all of us, and we're all guilty of it, so I don't leave myself out of this.
Isn't it amazing that, you know, it wasn't really that long ago when you had to talk on the phone when the cord was attached to the wall? I mean, not only could you not, I mean, it was an amazing thing when you got a portable phone in the house, that you didn't have to have a six-foot cord attached to the phone, you know, so, I mean, it's, the young people today have never lived through that and seen it, but we didn't have any issues back then, you know, and you're right, Carol, we're all guilty of it. I'd do the same thing. I added, I updated on my iPhone, and it put an add-on on the new upgrade that says if we recognize that you appear to be driving, the phone's silenced, so you can't get calls, and it says, accept or delete, and I accepted it because I thought, you know, that's a start, you know, one thing that, you know, eliminates it, so that if it acknowledged, if it notices that you're driving a car, it turns that off, you know, so... In Carol's case, notices her jogging, you know, he'd probably go as fast as a car, he'd probably turn your phone off at the job.
I can't not talk and run at the same time. But I wouldn't be able to run it yet. I could never talk and run at the same time.
Anyone else? Diane, would you like to give us a little insight about what's going on with the grand opening, Dog Pound?
Yes, we're almost ready to move in. We've been moving stuff. Now, one thing I wanted to say was, one of our part-time staff just put out on Facebook that we were getting a little low on food, and the response was so, nothing short of humbling, that we don't think we're going to have to look at even purchasing food for close to a year, maybe a little bit more. I mean, it was what was going to be a tool room, and the new facility is now a storage room, and the stack of food on three sides is actually above my head. Everywhere we have to store food in the new facility is full. It was just an unbelievable response from this community. You can't ask for anything better than that. It was amazing, but our, we're looking at having the ribbon coming on Friday, the third, at eleven, and the open house on Friday and Saturday, and then we get to move in. So, we are really, we're really ready to be, to be moved in, to start in the new building.
Yeah. Everybody's done a lot of, a lot of work, and, I mean, there's so many people involved that have done such a great job.
It's been a lot of work, but the trades that we had, they were phenomenal. They did a great job.
Yeah, it's amazing. It's really amazing, and, and also, you're going to have two days of open house for the public.
Correct.
Friday from eleven to three.
Eleven to three.
Saturday from eleven to three, both Friday the third and Saturday the fourth.
Correct.
So, if anyone wants to come and, you know, tour the facility, they have the ability to do that as well, so... Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
Well, you want to go to a fashion show, you don't want to go to the fashion show. There's one at the Standwell on the first, that's forty-third anniversary of it, and if you want to go out and have a little party, you can go down to Manador, Manicore, down on Mahoning Avenue, they've got a Halloween there.
Oh, my God, they're all decorated.
I mean, that place is decorated, inside-out, cat, people coming out of caskets and everything else that's in there. It's interesting, believe me. So, ladies, it's only ten dollars to get in, and, and above that, yeah, really nice.
Thank you.
Maybe you could wear your pink tutu.
I still got my old werewolf mask.
Oh, okay. With the pink tutu, that'd be great.
That'd look better.
Anyone else? All right, Carol?
No, I just went over to, last night, I went over to Leonard Kurtz. They have their fiftieth anniversary, and represented us at their fiftieth anniversary, and there was a woman there from North Jackson, a hundred years old, that was one of the first parents before the development of disabilities, schools were even allowed, because back many, many years ago, as we all know. The school, they had no, there was no place for, at that time, the mental, they called it the retarded, but then that law changed, it was development of disabilities, but they had no place for them, and people, doctors and such, and people would say that were in charge of different schools or whatever, that you'll have to put them in institution like your child. Well, that was something that was done in the past, you know, through all the intervention of all of the parents that had children that were developmentally disabled. This woman from North Jackson ran, had children in her basement that she would bring in. She was a teacher, and she had her child, as well as other parents, brought their children over, and they started their own coalition, and they had like schools that they would do in their homes. Then, of course, back in the sixties, Senate Bill one sixty, I think it was one sixty-seven or something like that, changed all of that, and I think instrumentally, that was Jack Palermo Sr. was a commissioner at the time with his group, I don't know if it was Barrett, and I'm trying to think, it was Barrett, Palermo, and there was another one that was in, and they were at that time, and then, of course, he passed, and Junior, and Jack Junior took over, but they continued that process, and to what we have right now. Leonard Kurtz, the son was there last night, who's got to be in his, like, early seventies. The father passed away, and that school was named after the father. I mean, it was interesting to hear the history of how we got to this point, and I, and you know I'm passionate about this, I don't mean to ramble on, but, and there were a few people there from the state, and, of course, we gave a diamond, you know, we gave a whole diamond to Bill Whitaker, and what a great job he's doing. And I said, when I got out, after I presented on our behalf, I said, you know, the commissioners, David, Anthony, and myself believe this, that we need to move forward, and the way the federal government and the state government are... over, and they started their own coalition, and they had like schools that they would do in their homes. Then, of course, back in the sixties, Senate Bill one sixty, I think it was one sixty-seven or something like that, changed all of that, and I think instrumental in that was Jack Palermon Senior was a commissioner at the time with his group. I don't know if it was Barrett, and I'm trying to think, it was Barrett Palermon, and there was another one that was in, and they were at that time, and then, of course, he passed, and Junior, and Jack Junior took over, but they continued that process, and to what we have right now. Leonard Kurtz, the son was there last night, who's gotta be in his, like, early seventies. The father passed away, and that school was named after the father. I mean, it was interesting to hear the history of how we got to this point, and I, and you know I'm passionate about this, I don't mean to ramble on, but, and there were a few people there from the state, and, of course, we gave a diamond, you know, we gave a whole diamond to Bill Whitaker, and what a great job he's doing. And I said when I got out, after I presented on our behalf, I said, you know, the Commissioners, David Anthony and myself, believe this, that we need to move forward, and the way the federal government and the state government are looking at this time, we're going backward with this program. We need to move forward. You need to keep the workshops and the schools in place. I says, we can't let it get to the point where we're like YDC, and they closed something that was so good for the residents that were there that could not be placed in other places, and they moved them. And I said, this, this is something the coalitions that are still involved have to work on, and so do we, because we don't wanna see our programs leave us, and then we have problems with our residents, our children, and make our guardians, which are their parents, and a lot of them are-
Old.
Old. I mean, they're older. I mean, there's, you know, so it's hard for a fifty, forty, fifty, sixty-year-old developmentally disabled person to change their routine. And it's, it's, it's hard for a private sector provider to be able to help that person when there's so many things that they need to do, and there's, there's a whole gamut of things we could talk about, but it's just sad, because there are some of them are moving, and their, their caregivers or people that are with them when they educate them are not the same as the ones they had, and I could go on and on, because it lasted-
The lady was a hundred years old.
Hundred years old, and she, I swear to God, I thought, well, she gotta be in her, like, late eighties, maybe. When they said she's a hundred, hundred or a hundred and one, I'm like, I don't believe this. So after it was over, she's an Italian, and she said, tell me, do you drink wine every day? Keep that beautiful complexion, keep pumped up, she started laughing, so I don't think she does, but I had to throw that in.
She's talking about when you guys went to high school together.
Yeah. And so Dave was right behind us, like, Dad, it's like two years, but like-
Anthony.
Yeah, I appreciate Carol sharing that as well, and I'd just like to say condolences to the Russo family. I've known them for, I don't know how long, his dad, Rocky, and the entire family, and I don't think Ron Russo had an enemy. He was just an amazing individual, and when you met him, you liked him the first time that you spoke to him. And actually, the sad thing is, we're supposed to judge a wine case together, which we've done every year for the past fifteen years at our Morale League, and he will not be there. But his brother Bobby whispered in my ear today, says, Anthony, I'm coming, we're bringing all of my brother's wine, and the last batch of peppers that he made, we will be there to celebrate him, so I am looking forward to it, because I wasn't going to go, because it wouldn't have been right without, without Ron. I knew his, his mother, his dad, and just the entire family, and very well-loved. I mean, thirty-five hundred people, I mean, there was firefighters, there was police officers that came. I drove around that funeral home yesterday for over an hour, and the only place I could have parked was three blocks away, almost probably quarter mile away, and I had dress clothes on and dress shoes, and there's just no way that I was able to walk, so Carol saved me a space this morning, and I was able to come there and pay my respects. Also, condolences to the Gerard Police Officer, Mr. Leah, who lost his life. I mean, how sad, there's just no words to describe what these individuals deal with every day, being in law enforcement, in firefighting, and I guess there's gonna be a ceremony at the Cavelli Center on his passing. I want to thank Jim Fortunato and Diane for all of the hard work and what they've done to keep the new dog shelter under budget, on time, and to work through some, some bunks that we had. Jim Fortunato's just amazing when it comes to protocol and procedure. Nobody knows the Bible, the county's better than Jimmy, so we appreciate all that hard work, and Diane, you as well. We look forward to the grand opening. I want to thank Mr. Medias for being a gentleman through this annexation process. I know, being a businessman myself, that time is money and how much those projects do cost, that things don't move quickly, and you certainly were a gentleman, gave us the opportunity and the residents of Canfield to make this a better deal for everybody, and you didn't have to do that like you did. So that shows the heart that you have, so we appreciate that very, very much. And somebody I'd like to introduce.
Miguel.
Miguel, from France. The tennis coach at Y S U.
Hi.
Couple words?
Oh, well, yeah. My name is Miguel Sorbo. I'm originally from France. I have been the tennis coach at Y S U for five years now. I mean, I was an assistant my first year, and I've been the head coach for four years now. Really enjoying being here, a lot of school, a lot of city, and I'm just curious, would like to be involved with the community, with the politics of, you know, the county, the city, a little more than I am right now, so that's why I'm here, kind of listen to what's going on, and I get to know, get to know how things work, I guess, so. Thanks for having me.
We need some tennis lessons, you promised that we'd all get-
We do, we do. Anytime.
Hey, Miguel, it's very good to see you, because I remember we had an opportunity to have dinner together, my wife and I, with you.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
One of the fundraisers.
Exactly.
It was excellent. I learned a lot about, you know, and you're also not only, you're the men's and the women's.
I am, and the women's, correct.
For both.
Correct.
Women are the best. I was gonna say, the women are your better-
They have been doing a little better.
Stay now.
Sorry?
I think it's stay now.
Perfect.
And Miguel, tell us the backgrounds, too. I mean, you have tennis players from all over the world, right?
Yeah, yeah, so-
You're on the Youngstown State Tennis Team.
Yeah, so, I mean, yes, the dynamic of things with tennis, and, you know, like, the way the sport goes worldwide has been, you know, drawn me a little bit to bring a lot of international into the team, so, which, you know, which is great, I think, you know, I can bring some diversity into the, into the school, but also into the athletic departments. And, you know, all I can say that they've been great ambassadors of the school and the city, you know, they're really, they're really proud to wear, to wear the Y every day, and, I mean, it's been great to see them blending, blend in and getting involved. We're trying to get involved as much as possible in community services, you know, across the city, and I think that's, that's a way to give back as much as we can, especially to the scholarships they're getting. So that's something, that's something I'm always looking forward to, so if any of you have things that they need help with, community service-wise, always happy to try to help with the tennis team and bring them over and have some, some help out there, so, so, yeah, so.
Yeah, and what an excellent job you do, not only as a coach, but, you know, to be able to bring all of those different cultures-
Thank you.
-together from so many diverse backgrounds of people, and to make it all work as a team.
Correct.
I know we got a chance to sit with one of your young ladies that was on the tennis team when we were having dinner, and just, you know, how interesting it was to sit and communicate and learn, and, you know, and how eye-opening it is that, you know, we have such a great community and a great teams at Youngstown State that represent us and emulate, you know, what we're all about, so it's, it's a great thing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much for being here and for all the work that you do on behalf of Youngstown.
Thank you. I appreciate it. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Yeah, and I, my colleagues covered just about everything, but, you know, the Russo family, what a, what a part of our community, you know, part of our heritage, part of who we all are, you know, brothers, twin brothers, fire department, deputy sheriffs, father, I mean, a whole family of service, and just, what a tragedy, you know, and it really is an eye-opening experience, and hopefully, you know, it serves to save our lives down the road, you know, that we don't let his death go without learning something from it, you know, on behalf of all of us, you know, like Carol mentioned, you know, we all need to step back and realize what we're doing, and please make sure you keep the Russo family in your prayers. Sad loss for the whole community. That has for motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Maggie O'Gaddy. Commissioner Dickson.
Yes.
Thanks. Yes. Continue, Commissioner.